For joining us this afternoon for your city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith. Mr. Childs. Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Voice.
All right, thank you. Mr. Voice and Childs, we knew they wouldn't be here this afternoon. So after the moment of silence, I'm going to ask Mr. Bowson if he would do the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. As I said, the pledge will be led by Councilmember Dave Bowson.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and eternal.
All right. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the June 16th, 2025 regular council session and June 27th, 2025 special council session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have an agenda. First time on our agenda is public comments. Please come up, state your name and address for the record and let us know your thoughts.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, 411 Almond Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Whenever I speak on matters that might and tell me saying that I want a person destroyed for what they've done to me, when I say "we," I'm talking about my heavenly Father and I, me through my prayers. So I don't want it to get discombobulated on how I'm speaking. What I just gave a mayor is an obituary for my brother Reed Roberts, who dropped, who passed away June 21st of 2025, exactly 26 years from June 21st of 99, when the assault by Des Moines Police Officer Charles Tedesco, when he went in the restroom at Urban Dale High School, sexually assaulted my daughter and spoke on life insurance money in that half a million dollars, as well as stocks. The policy number was 044680. John Deere Life Insurance. From that time on, and it was a division with not just me and my brother, but other family members, but they terrorized my brother. And some people deal with fear different. Me and my brother was never able to reconcile, even though we both, me finding out through his son that I had never met, that he had plans on you meeting your uncle. But he said, "But it won't be no time soon." And that's a shame that it has come to this by him being forcefully weaponized against me. And this took place even in the courts where it was Roberts versus Roberts with Pat Galis and Judge David Oderkirk, who made it worse, didn't try to make it better. They added injury to insult with the decision. And they would like to see me lash out at my brother, but I love my brother with my whole heart. I'll keep continuing to walk them down to their graves for what they did to me and my brother with my prayers. Okay? So with John Deere's being a part of it, as well as people in the judicial system, law enforcement, felony act, as well as handling my brother and many other institutions in the financial arena. This is the people that I'm talking about when I say my prayers are on you for the rest of my life, that God destroys your family all the way back to Haynes Beach. I got just enough time. Me and my brother, like you and your brother, would often share music if we hadn't been together for a while, like you and James get together. Now, make sure James get that for me. Y'all get together and talk about new songs and what came out. If I could discuss one with my brother today, it would be two of them, because we share the love for music. It would be Chris Webby, North of Richmond. You ever heard that? Check it out, man. Chris Webby, North of Richmond. Mo Three, M-O Three, and Bobby Billions, Outside. The Billions, Bobby Billions and Outside would be dedicated because in 1999, when this happened to my daughter, I was scared to let my children go outside. You understand what I'm saying? So I know what my brother was feeling. Have a good evening.
Yep, and thank you for this. All right.
I'm Megan Butler from 818 Cloud Street, and I'm here to talk about the new pool. The zero entry is a great improvement, and the texture of the concrete is wonderful, and the staff is great. But my praise for the new pool ends there. I understand an outside company did a survey and gave recommendations based on what is currently available in the Cedar Valley. I requested a copy of that, and I just got an email saying that I have one available for me at the leisure services, but I haven't seen it yet myself. And that we have plenty of pools, as is, with the Lost Island, the Falls, and the Sportsplex Pool, all of which my family can afford. We get to go to Burns because we have the key card and we can afford it there. It made, I know that the report made mention of needing longer access to water during the summer to keep people cool. But I'm disappointed in the city of Waterloo for letting things go so long. The pool was 25 years past its life expectancy, and we're a city of 67,000 people. And we have a pool that has a capacity of 423. Previously, we had Gates and Burns. And Bree told me that the pool at Gates never met capacity, but probably had something more than double of what our current pool has. So 800 at just Gates, or at just Burns, plus Gates Pool. I do have a pass, as do my four children and my partner. We've been in the new pool multiple times since it opened. And the word around the pool has been, it's so small, and constant apologies for bumping into each other. My children miss being able to use their diving toys because there's just no space to do it. It's too crowded. They also miss swimming to me from the side. So I used to stand halfway across Burns Pool, and the kids would jump into me and swim across and swim back to practice their swimming skills. And now if I get more than five feet away from the edge, somebody gets in between us and they can't jump to me. There's no space for a swimming test so that the kids can use the diving boards. So on two occasions, I've watched the lifeguards ask 40 people, I counted, head counted, over 40 people move out of the way so a child could do the swim test back and forth across the pool. And then I've seen kids have to retake it because somebody gets in their way, and then they have to touch the ground, and then they, they have to do it again. And I just don't think that's right for us. I've been hit in the head with a basketball while carrying my smile child from the deep end to the shallow end, where they can touch independently. The concrete issues are extensive with lots of standing water and algae growing in multiple locations. The shade tents on the east side are installed backwards for the sun. So they shade the area behind the fence and like towards the back. And they don't actually shade where people need shade when it gets warm. My child, my youngest child, was able to do the slide at the old pool and now has no slides that she can do because she's not tall enough. And she probably won't be able to do them for another couple of years because she's little, but she is a swimmer. And I feel like multiple of these issues could have been... Can I continue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Within time reason.
Right, I just have a little bit left. I feel like multiple of these issues could have been avoided with proper planning and asking like more from the city or more from the community. One rule that is just constantly making the lifeguards blow their whistle is standing on the peninsula between the basketball area and the deep end. And originally, I thought that was because there's about three inches of standing water there because it doesn't get to the drain. But the manager on site told us that actually it's because of the depth difference between the two sides, which is the same thing we have it.
So what I'm going to do, some of the, some of the things that you indicated are management things. I'm going to have Todd take down your information so he can call you directly. The parts you say about the size, you know, when I, when we did the ribbon cutting, you know, we kind of had the same discussion and trying to figure out ways in which, there's, there's ways in which the pool can be increased.
Yeah.
And so eventually, we'll, we'll take a look at that. But I can't say that all of your points aren't, aren't valid points. You've been apologized to several times already, so I won't do that. But one of the first questions that Todd and I had talked about is, at this site, it's not, it wouldn't be towards the practice range. It'll be more towards going to where the, the, the courts are. And so we, we have had initial discussions. But right now, I can't disagree with, with a lot that you said. It did take a miracle to get this thing open within that timeframe. It did take a, a lot of money. And, and what I was, you know, it's surprising what, you know, eight, nine million dollars can buy. But there is, there have been initial conversations over the next several years, taking a look at that. And you are right, both sites provided more capacity for a town of 67, 68,000 people. And we've, we've had those discussions. And so I would love to continue that on if you want to reach out to me. But for some of the management things that's happening and, and basketballs and those things, Todd's going to take down your information and talk to you.
I called, I called him and, and.
Did he call you back?
No, I've already talked to him on the phone a couple of times, yes. But I wanted to make sure my voice was heard by you guys as well because you guys are the ones with the money that can make the changes.
All right, thank you. And you feel free to contact me.
I also wanted to extend an invite to anyone on the council to go swimming with my children and I, to see what we are experiencing. So I plan on emailing you my, my comments with my contact information. And I'd love for somebody to get in the pool with me and actually see what we're experiencing. Thank you.
Yep. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Any council questions or?
Yes, sir.
You want to ask those now?
Well, I just had public comments.
This is time to do that.
That's what I'm saying, we're ready for that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I apologize. So I appreciate Chief Beck sending us out an email on fire-related calls for fireworks today. I'm really disappointed to find out that we had a house fire caused by fireworks that were resulted in $30,000 worth of damage. And another fire outside of a house that was $5,000 worth of damage, as well as the other related fire calls. I sent Chief Duncan an email this morning, just to give him a heads up that I was going to ask about calls for service, police calls for service for fireworks complaints, how many we responded to, and, and citations. So if Mr. Chief Duncan could address those, those questions for the public, because I'm getting, I got a lot of emails, not emails, but calls from people.
So what I sent you all was Rob Duncan, Chief of Police, July 1st through the 6th, calls for service. We had 103 fireworks-related calls in the timeframe when the fireworks were legal. I think that was 47 of them, or 46. So 50 or so calls for service during the time where they weren't legal. I responded to Councilman Simon regarding, we did not issue any citations. I sent an email to our supervisors a couple of weeks ago saying if citations were warranted, please do so. I triaged some of the calls. Many of the calls were extra attention given out by dispatch related to our calls for service at night. Most of these calls are happening after dark when people are lighting them off. And we were extremely busy this weekend. We did not have the staff to authorize overtime for this event, or before the fireworks. We're currently actually down 14 officers with injuries. Military people have retired. So it's unfortunate we couldn't get anybody extra in, and we were extremely busy. As you all know, the email I sent out regarding what happened last night. Anything else that answered?
Yeah, did, did we, the ones that, the ones that occurred during the normal hours, did we respond to any of those?
Yeah, a lot of the calls were kids out in the street or fireworks overhead. So yeah, we did go to those. If, if we did go, they were warned and advised, or there was nothing found by the time the officers got there.
Because in, in years past, we've had issues with the parks. I know, I don't know if we had messes in the parks this year. But, but we did, we have had people, you know, shooting them off in Liberty Park and other places where they have large firework displays and that.
There was a couple of calls, I think at Burns maybe. I don't know that we found anything there.
And, and we, did we attempt to utilize any reserves for this, for, during that time, timeframe for fireworks only?
Our reserves are really low right now, and it's very difficult to even get them to come in for special events. So, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chief Duncan, I know we spent a lot of time up here talking about code enforcement. We, we pass, you know, ordinances, we set prices on them. And then I know myself, something has to rise to a pretty high level before I call the police department for anything. If somebody shoots a firework off, I'm not going to say anything. I'm not saying I don't know what everybody else's reasons for calling you were. But if it's risen to the point where they're calling the police, I, I just find it funny that we, we didn't have any citations. None of them, in your opinion, rose to the level that, that you could cap, you could write a citation to these people to deter them from maybe doing it in the future?
I haven't been able to, today I was really busy with a couple of meetings that took up most of my day. So I haven't had a look at, haven't, haven't had the availability to look at certain calls that we actually showed up as.
I'm just, I'm just asking because people want to know why things aren't getting enforced sometimes. I get, that's one of the most popular calls I get is from every other department, not just the police department, but code enforcement. They do a great job. I just, you know, I know it's hard to collect, you know, viola, violators. But I was just curious as to what your opinion was as to why we didn't. So I'll give you an opportunity to respond to that down the road, no hurry.
Okay.
So just wanted to express the concerns I was getting, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I would also, with regards to fireworks, whether we set ours or not, there's still going to be people shooting them off. The, the most effective phone call that people can make is directly to the state, which now guarantees, even if there was a ban, it now guarantees the third and fourth are going to do it. Not, we already knew that there was going to be people doing fireworks this year because it's on Saturday. Saturday was the next day, that's a weekend. So there was no doubt that people were going to be doing it. As he said, it was a very busy weekend as well. But the most effective call should be one to the state, which is the, which are the folks that had made this legal. And that's not partisan. Republican, Democrat, independents have made it so that fireworks can be shot off. So I would also have them call representatives, local and state, also if folks don't want any type of violations or any type of fireworks within the city. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I wanted to be preemptive in addressing the calls and the questions that I'm going to receive in reference to the comment made by our, one of our constituents in regards to Burns Park and the size of the pool. As you know, that many of my constituents from, as well as those that drove in from Old Wine and Dunkerton to swim at Gates Parks will be concerned about that Burns Park being made larger when we don't have a park at East Side or North End, where there used to be a, a pool. So of course, you know that once, one of my campaign issues that I had was about the removal of Gates Pool. And we'll continue to advocate for the constituents to have a pool in that area, near that area, which will mitigate some of the concerns that the constituents shared, as well as to meet the needs of more of our, the residents in our city. So most definitely had to make that, that statement. I don't think it would sit well with them if we expanded that pool and not have a pool at Gates that has a splash pad for children, but nothing for adults to get cool from the, from the heat and water. Wanted to share those, those thoughts as well.
All right, thank you.
All right. We already closed the public hearing, right?
No, we, we closed the public portion of it. Then we had council comments, so now.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Let's make a, make a motion to close public comments.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Bill's Payment 1A1 for June 2030 in the amount of $2,824,268.70 for June 30th in the amount of $4,016,763.77 and for July 7th in the amount of $6,674,243.95.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Bowson.
I would like to discuss item number two and 25 separately.
All right, thank you. So we will vote on all these items except for number two and number 25.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, read the roll call vote, please. I mean, roll call vote.
Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes, and with, well, you may have to pull them out. Yes, for all of them, with the exception of number four.
So you're voting no on number four?
Yes.
And Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution to authorize an exception to the city while Waterloo's purchasing policy to approve the purchase of one 2025 Type 1 Superliner, 171-inch body Ford F-550 ambulance from Lifeline Emergency Vehicles of Sumner, Iowa, in the amount of $397,264. And number 25 is a motion to deny the recycling yard license application for Lysitacal Auto Recyclers, Inc., at 1720 Blackhawk Road.
Second.
That motion, that motion has been made with the second. Mr. Bowson?
Chief, I had a couple of questions on, on the, the $397,000. Does not include any of the necessary equipment inside the ambulance except the cot loading system, correct?
Bill Beck, Fire Chief, that $397,000 includes only the power load cot and the power load system.
And the, and the vehicle.
And the vehicle, yeah.
So is the equipment for this ambulance going to be taken from another rig or we're going to be purchasing equip, new equipment for this?
We'll be taking it from the rig that will, it will be replacing. This will be the new transport rig at Station 3. So that equipment will all be kept at Station 3. The ambulance at Station 3, I believe, is then going to go to Station 2 to be used. And then Station 2, Station 2's ambulance will become a reserve.
Okay. So how are we paying for this?
I believe it's all bond money.
Bond money. So is it possible to have a, a work session sometime in the future to revisit the transfer? Because when we originally set up this transfer program, it was going to purchase a new ambulance each year.
Correct.
And we're not purchasing a new ambulance with, with revenue from the transfer service.
Not yet.
We're bonding.
Correct.
Okay. But I, I would, I would really like to revisit that and just, and just see, discuss where we're at and, and, and if we're reaching our, our, our financial goals that were set forth when, when we approved hiring new people and for this transfer service. And my, thank you. And my next question was on the salvage yard denial. I, when I was a fire marshal, this was denied every year. So what happens when we do deny this? Because really, he's, he doesn't, doesn't affect his business, he stays in business.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, we can definitely, I can definitely talk to the attorney's office and see if we'd like to take further actions through the court systems. In the past, we have won in court. I believe one time they said we could fine him a dollar a day so it didn't seem worthwhile to go out there with code enforcement every day. So we could, we'll have to discuss further legal options that we have to see what's worthwhile to try and bring Mr. Litsgow into compliance.
And can, do you have just any idea how long this has been going on? Because it was going on when I was fire marshal, I know that.
At least 30 years. The, the city of Waterloo went to the Supreme Court with Mr. Litsgow and lost. Well, we, we won, but he was allowed to stay there in certain court-ordered boundaries, and he is outside of those.
He's outside those now. And part, portion of that lot is, is in, it's water whenever.
The, the entire area he's in is in the floodway.
Right.
So he should not be there at all. But he did win in court to be in a court-ordered area.
And the only reason I bring it up is, is I just wanted some clarification because we deny this every year, and then every year he stays in business. Okay, thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You said it's a dollar a day, is all we could code enforce.
That was, that was probably, when I went to court on it, that was probably about 15 years ago.
Can you, can you go back 30 years and collect a dollar a day?
The, the court was specific that we'd have to ticket him every day for a dollar.
Every single day. Can't come out tomorrow and ticket him back for the 30.
That is correct.
Very good, thanks.
It's a bargain.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have some new hires. We have Tatiana Moore and Jennifer McGee for our Housing Authority. I don't think either one of you are here. We have Safi, Safiya Alehi. Don't, please don't tell Mohammed. We have Safi- Sophia Aleh, don't, please don't tell Mohammed I messed up. After, after working together for 10 years. But if you would please stand. And then we also, anyone else here? Right, well, we want to say welcome. You know, your father's done incredible work here, and we know that you come with the credentials, and you're an incredible talent. So we look forward to a very incredible future of working here with you. So thank you so much and congratulations. And some board appointments, Ellen Shea, Addison County, Dennis Hart, Angel Stigler. So Ellen is with the Cultural and Arts Commission, that's new. And the, the other three are with the Human Rights Commission as well. So we want to thank you if you're watching or if you're here. We want to thank you so much for joining in with us to serve, so we appreciate it. And with that, could someone take number one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located southeast of 155 Warp Drive in the amount of $1 to BKK S Holding LLC, including approval of a development agreement.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that has questions about this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located southeast of 155 Warp Drive to BKK S Holding LLC in the amount of $1 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I, I believe this is self-storage units, am I correct, Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson.
And, and I, I reiterate and I say it over and over again, I would really like to see our development agreements based more on, on job building permits. I know, because we're taking multiple lots here for, for self-storage units, and it's not like we're going to employ a lot of people out there. It's just taxes that are going to go back into debt service levy out there and stay in the tiff. That, that's all I've got.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the development agreement with BKK S Holding LLC for the construction of a total, of a total of 94,100 square feet of storage development in the last 39, 34 through 39, 6.5 acres of warp for addition and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number two?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 512 North Barclay Street in the amount of $15,200 to Donnie RE Investments LLC, including approval of development agreement for the rehabilitation of the home.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 512 North Barclay Street in the amount of $15,000, $15,000 to Donnie RE Investments LLC and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Okay.
That motion has been made with the second, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I was just going to ask Mr. Anderson if this is the, the same owner that we dealt with at Parkview Gardens, 310 Upland?
Mr. Anderson, please come to the, please come to the.
And the only reason I ask is, is because we didn't have a good track record trying to get any type of compliance on 310 Upland. Boarding it up, mowing it, everything, and is this the same owner?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, this is the same owner that we bought the Parkland property from. It's the same owner that's doing the water street renovation project downtown.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, council? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Donnie RE Investments LLC in conjunction with the rehabilitation of 512 North Barclay Street, including a grant of $5,000 for partial purchase price refund and a grant of $5,000 for info housing development and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
That motion has been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for demolition of in-site clearance services contract number D-2025-06-03P.
Second.
Has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to D-2025-06-03P? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
The resolution confirming approval of the plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to motion, make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Madam Clerk?
Okay, our engineer's estimate was $60,000. Our first bidder was Earth Services and Abatement of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $164,750. Second bidder was Layman Trucking and Excavating, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $55,283. Our next bidder was Tome Excavating and Grading of LaPorte City, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $47,781.20. And then our final bidder was DeClaro Demolition Company of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided 5% security, and their bid amount was $78,046.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take the resolution approving and award the bid to Tome Excavation, Excavating and Grinding of LaPorte City, Iowa in the amount of $47,781.20, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with demolition and site clearance services. Contract D, our number D-2025-06-03P and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Thank you. That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone do number four?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2026 Airport Fence Relocation Project, contract number 1133.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this relocation project fence? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council?
I have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
300, there's not a lot in this, in, in our council even showing where we're relocating the fence and why we're relocating the fence. And we've got $317,000 in fence relocation if we, when we proceed. And we also have $80,900 coming up as AECOM's portion of this relocation. So it's a $400,000 bid. Can we just get an overview on, I, I would, I would have liked to see where we're relocating the fence, but there's nothing in here, and why we're relocating it?
Jamie Knutson, city engineer. The existing fence on the west side of the airport goes all the way over to Levercy Road, and it encloses an area of the old, the number three air, or number three runway that has been taken out of service. So what this is going to do is it's going to install a brand-new security fence parallel with the north runway. And then it will also remove a portion of the old number three runway, whatever one that is.
624.
Whichever one it is. But we'll be removing a portion of that as well, disconnecting some electrical and some other things. And then we'll be removing all of the existing fence that goes clear out towards Levercy Road and all of that, that is protecting all of that airspace to open up the 89 acres in there that currently is fenced off for future development. We've been working with the FAA to make sure that everything we're doing makes sure, is, meets all their security plans and all of that. This will also provide future expansion for International Paper. And as soon as we get additional, we finish up warp that we're working on right now, the next phase of that warp extension will come down through that 89 acres and off to the west to tie into Levercy Road to provide more development ground for hopefully future development.
So this is, this is just a relocation, taking part of 624 out?
A portion of it where the new fence is going to go over the top of it, yes.
And then, and then the, the additional acres that we're going to open up, we'll still have to put all the infrastructure in, roads, water?
We still will have to put all the infrastructure, roads and all of that stuff in at some point, but that gets us to the point where we will, and we are currently working with the FAA to get that 89 acres released, along with another portion for International Paper to the south end of the airport there.
When do you think we'll hear from the FAA that, so that we can proceed? Because it, is that, I mean, is, is that a make or break with International Paper if the FAA says no?
So currently, there's two FAA releases that we're, that we're asking for. The one has been submitted. We are expecting to hear something hopefully by August 1st, give or take. And that'll be the area where they would run their new rail line in off the CN main tracks there and would come in parallel to the tracks and then come into their site there. This 89 acres, that one's going to take a little longer, we're hoping by the end of the year. But this provides an additional 33 acres for International Paper to expand. Not something they need right now, but it's something for the future that we wanted to take care of as soon as we could. So it's ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Jamie, please. So just for clarification, so this $317,080, it's not just moving a fence, we're actually tearing up concrete?
Yes, we'll be removing a portion of the old runway, yes.
That covers that.
And that's all included, yes.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, because that, that seemed awful high for just moving a fence.
This is a, if, if you're out there or you ever take a look at the aerials, it's a huge area. I mean, it takes a lot of fence to enclose 89 acres, so.
Thank you for clarification.
I have one more question, sir.
Yes, sir.
And, and not to end, are you needing some, you need? So on this, I, I mean, as they're relocating it, they, after that, it still has to be secured every night.
So what we will, we do before we remove the old fence that goes clear out to Levercy, we will install the new fence. Once that site is secure, then we will be able to take out the old fence. So yes, you're exactly right.
That was my question because I, I know how picky they are out there.
We cannot, and there's, there's FAA coordination and all that stuff that is along with that that they have to do. But yes, that's exactly right. We can't leave the airport unprotected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Madam Clerk, bids, please.
All right, we had three bids. The first was from Lodge Construction of Shell Rock, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $384,730. Second bidder was Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $317,080. Final bidder was Vith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security, and their bid amount was $382,409.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving award a bid to Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa in the amount of $317,080 and approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2026 Airport Fence, Airport Fence Relocation Project, contract number 1133, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number five?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Motion received, file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for FY 2025 pre-gravitated shelter contract number 1113.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The hearing is now open. Are there any comments, uh, for, uh, this item? For the second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't be so excited about that.
Aye!
Opposed? All right.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming plan, specification form of contracts, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was, I appreciated Mr. Knudsen getting back to me on this because I had no idea what we were spending the money on. Because it's not just, there's no description in there of what that pre-fraginated shelter is for. And it's for our fiber, uh, project over there by the University Avenue and Highway sixty-three. But what's surprising is, is it appears that every time we go out for bid, the, the price of that shelter keeps going up. It's kind of almost like we're held hostage because we have to have it, so.
All right. Yes, sir.
So, a question in regards to that as well is, is this, is this a require an amendment to anything, or is it still covered under initial contract? Or do we have to come back with an amendment to approve this?
Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer, um, I'm assuming you're talking for the original overall fiber build-out? No, there's nothing, this is a separate standalone that was not included. None of these three fiber huts, the one at Station Six, the one at Linden, or this one, were included, um, just because the contractor that's doing the install generally does not provide the actual fiber huts themselves, the actual building and the guts that need to go in this thing, so.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids and forward to the city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Um, our estimate was three-hundred-thousand dollars. Our first bidder was EBB Flow Company doing business as USTDW. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two-hundred-and-five-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty dollars. Second bidder and final bidder was Network Building Consulting LLC. No security was provided at the time of the bid, uh, was opened, and their bid amount was two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-eight dollars.
All right, thank you. All right, could someone take, uh, one, two, one, two, and three, please?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bozen?
You want, just one, two, and three? I didn't know if you guys changed. Okay. Uh, like to adopt a resolution approving a twenty-eighty agreement with Blackhawk County, Iowa to jointly fund, construct, and share law enforcement lab facility and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number two is adopting a resolution approving agreement with Blackhawk Sprinklers, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of forty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars in conjunction with the server room, dry foam sprinkler system, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. And number three is a resolution approving a cooperative services agreement with USDA Wildlife Services to minimize wildlife-related property damage and risk to human health and safety, and authorizing the mayor to, to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is anyone with questions on those three items?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel?
Real quick, I, I, I appreciate on, on the twenty-eighty agreement, uh, the chief and, and Sheriff Neff, uh, when it originally came up and going back and, and changing some of the verbiage in that, uh, I still struggle with a fifty-year agreement, but, uh, it, it is what it is. But I, I do appreciate the work that they put into it and, and holding it off until tonight, till everything was, all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, we were joined by, uh, our sheriff too, so, uh, thank you for your guys' work. Uh, four, five, and six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement, number two with AECOM, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed thirty-five-thousand-three-hundred dollars for a traffic engineering study in conjunction with the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Street conversion, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number five, a resolution approving a joint project agreement with Waterloo Community School District to reimburse the city for design and construction costs for roadwork associated with the new high school, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number six, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECOM, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed eighty-thousand-nine-hundred dollars for construction-related services in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six Airport Fence Relocation Project Contract, number eleven-thirty-three, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
That motion has been made with the second. I think we have a question. Please come forward, sir.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. On number four, um, will there be any public input on this? Any public meetings or whatever? And, uh, my other question is, why is Fourth Street included? I understand Fifth and Sixth were, they're talking about doing two-way. Fourth is already a two-way.
Good question, sir. Mr. Knudsen?
Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer, I'll answer the second one first because it's the easy one. I messed up. I should not have included Fourth Street. I apologize for that. It's just Fifth and Sixth. As far as public input, this is just for AECOM providing us or doing all the uh, heavy lifting to get our application put together so that I could submit it. We will see. Hopefully by the first of the year, we'll know if we actually get the grant. And then at that point, we'll have probably a year of going through negotiations to get the grant agreement in place. And then we can actually get to the point where we can start, um, working on design and start holding the public meetings and things like that at that point.
So the question is yes to Mr. Dreyer's question?
But it's probably at least eighteen months out if we get the grant.
So we're looking at a grant to do this?
Yes.
But yet we don't know whether the public really wants it or not. Why do we need to grant it if the public doesn't want it?
Council has asked us to go ahead and move ahead with this project.
But why?
So we don't need to go back and forth. Um, the, the question is, are we gonna have public input on how this should look? Should there be
Yes.
more sidewalks? Does there need to have more character to it? And so we're going to have public input on how it looks. So thank you, Mr. Knudsen.
So, so it's already a done deal. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
David Deeds, uh, here on behalf of JSA Development, two-fifteen East Fourth Street. Just a quick comment regarding that, uh, this is a conversation that has been going on for at least a decade. There have been a number of public input sessions when the original conceptual development was done by AECOM several years ago, or even that long, three years ago maybe. So this has been an ongoing conversation, and I appreciate the council, uh, moving ahead with this. I hope that regardless of the outcome, the, of the grant application, this will, uh, be a first one for this particular fund. I urge the council to move forward with this project regardless of that. Find the resources to do it. Hopefully, the federal government will help us pay for it. But the reason for it is, is it will bring Fifth and Sixth Streets into the twenty-first century. It will slow traffic in a positive way, which is good for traffic, uh, accidents, but that corridor in the, in the core of downtown is one of the highest traffic incident corridors in the city at this point, particularly around where the, uh, corridor intersects two-eighteen. Uh, you can look back at the study for the shows that. I think there was a comment made about there's no businesses along that corridor anyway. Uh, well, that's point, is what business would like to locate along a one-way street that traffic routinely goes thirty-five-plus miles per hour with the focus purely straight ahead. It is to revitalize that corridor. It is to provide safer environment for the corridor, for not only cars but pedestrians. And it also generally brings more positive activity to the corridor, and therefore I hope that regardless of the outcome of the grant application, we move this process along. Maybe sometime before I leave this earth, we'll get it done, so. Hopefully much before that. But again, thank you for your support of it up to this point.
And to, to add to the last portion of that point, um, we're at a point now where we have no choice. Those streets need to be redone. Uh, they're in poor condition. Uh, so we need to get that done, uh, as well. So the commitment to move forward and reconstruct the streets, uh, we have no choice, so we're going to make that happen one way or another. So hopefully we can find some funds to be able, uh, to help it. And there's a lot that goes into that actual project that have some needs to. Um, counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Simon?
So, I have not talked to one person that's in favor of this, and I appreciate you coming up and expressing, um, your ideas, and those were valid ideas, and I like them. It still doesn't take away the, I mean, we, we need to have an alternate north-south thorough way then because a lot of people use that going back and forth, and a lot of people don't wanna, you know, slow their travel time from north to south. Uh, I don't think that the sixty-three is adequate, but to me, that's just the fact that nobody else has wanted this has led me to believe that I, I, I'm not in favor of it. You know, if, if it's gonna bring businesses to those two corridors, I mean, if there's proof that that's gonna happen, then I could probably be swayed into believing that. So, you know, listening to that, I can, I can see where there might be positives there, but it just seems like a lot of money is being spent on this, and I understand that the roads are in terrible condition. I don't think that's a, a question. I think it's just the, the one ways. I, I, I think you can replace the roads and still, you know, use that money and maybe not change the direction. That's just my thoughts.
Jamie, just for tonight's purposes, what are we doing on this item? Ten dollars.
I'll collect afterwards, uh, Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer. So all the, the, all this is doing is approving an agreement with AECOM to help or for them to, to pay them in order to do the work for us to be able to submit for the grant, and it, and that's all this is.
Thank you. Mr. Bozen?
Yeah, I've expressed my, my opinion on the Fifth and Sixth Street conversion. With the grant or without the grant is thirty million dollars. I, I believe that was a figure that was given to us at the work session. So I, I have a real issue with that one. And then also, on number five, the, the joint resolution, it's, it's really vague, and I've had email conversations with Mr. Knudsen, and I appreciate his input. What the school's gonna pay for, what we're gonna pay for, what we're jointly gonna pay for. And the only thing I can wrap my head around and get behind is, is the Huntington Road extension that, that needs to be done because everything else is in conjunction to, to, to make this traffic flow and work for the new school, which I think that they should be responsible for paying for and not the citizens of Waterloo. Uh, the Green Hill roundabout, we've got the total of four roundabouts, uh, at least on the design going in there. I, I don't think we should pay jointly for the Green Hill Roundabout. I don't think we should pay for any part of Kattowski. But I have no problem with the Huntington Road extension. That's, that's just my opinion, and I've had more, well, I've had two or three people, uh, pro, three now, because I had another, some emails and correspondence today that don't believe that we, that, that we should be paying for the road improvements for the new high school, that they should be paying for those improvements. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, nobody else has any?
Indirectly, they're still paying.
Indirectly, we're still paying, but...
Whether it's one part or the other, they're still paying.
It, it, you're right.
Yes, sir.
It's not the citizens.
I'm also on number five on the community school, uh, high school there. I, I agree with Mr. Bozen that there's gonna be a long list of additional costs for us moving to the city Waterloo's high school and combine them in, put them in that location. I wasn't involved with, you know, picking that location. It just seems like most cities, you see them, they build them on the outskirts of town. A lot of these problems that we're gonna run into and all these extra bills that we're having are, you know, self-inflicted by putting them in the location that we did. And I, I just don't see how we have to continue to put money into this at the expense of the neighborhood that it's going into. So I have a real hard time with number five, so.
What was the, 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 the bond vote? They had an overwhelming majority of folks. I'm not saying I agree.
But I don't think the other...
I don't, I'm not saying I agree their, their location. But, you know, folks did vote, so now we're in a situation where we know, uh, that there's going to be, uh, pressure from multiple, uh, ways coming into that site, so. I, I mean, it's, it's, I, I don't vote on it, but I mean, we, if, if there are problems and we don't do anything about it, people are gonna come to the council meeting and give us a, an earful. So if we have an opportunity, uh, to try to partner and work to, to create, um, some type of safe passage, uh, in and around that area, I, I do think there's some level of obligation. How much we pay for that, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure, but we gotta make sure that that area is well-studied and, and the traffic, whether it's roundabouts or whatever it is, we, we know there's something that needs to be done, and this gives us an opportunity to look at that, but Mr., uh, Mr. Nichols, you had a question or comment?
And I would just, um, add that a lot of those people coming to us would be coming to us to remind us that, uh, they voted overwhelmingly for this project as citizens of Waterloo, whether or not the school is paying for it or the city, um, is paying for it. And with the, uh, traffic engineering study, um, I, I think it's valuable that we should be studying this, um, and at least allowing AECOM to put, put together, um, the opportunity for us for, to submit for the grant for this very expensive project that we're gonna be that, uh, gonna have to be undergoing, um, which, again, we have to do because we're at that point where we really need those roads repaired.
Mr. Bozen?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Ms. Wilder, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
When I was doing my work with the, um, Structural and Safety Committee with Habitat for Humanity, the group really was in favor of this conversion. And so I really wanna be mindful of the individuals that I did speak to that really wanna see this happen. And I do agree, if there aren't any businesses over there, then maybe we should give them the opportunity to put businesses there, because right now, like, our downtown is doing a great job with adding new businesses, but we could also have more. And so if this is gonna give us that opportunity, then why not take it?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and it sounds like we've, we're talking about two different things. Definitely, uh, we do want the AECOM to study that, uh, and provide some, um, guidance, and if we can get the funding for it, if, and it needs to be done, get the funding for it as it relates to, uh, changing Fifth and Sixth Streets. On the other issue as it relates to the money that we're going to, uh, put into changing or whatever we need to do to the streets for the new high school. I don't, while, um, residents may have voted for the new high school, I don't think they, uh, if they had known that it was gonna come out of their pockets to help put, uh, you know, change the streets or modify the streets to accommodate the school, if, in fact, they would've voted, maybe so. Um, but I, I, you know, I have a hard time, um, uh, saying that we should pay for something that Waterloo schools has done. Um, if, if we, if there's a grant for us to contribute, yes, but if there's money out of our pockets, um, you know, I would say no.
So, so thank you, everybody, for your comments. Ultimately, uh, if we have other projects across the community, we partner with those projects. But Jamie, in regards to, to this one and what's being spent, um, and how much we're expending, uh, for this project, can you just kinda talk to us about what's happening, what they're going to pay for, and what we, because, please?
Sure. So, and Mr. Bozen is correct, this, this agreement...
Jamie Knudsen?
Yep, Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer, sorry about that. Mr. Bozen is correct in the fact that, uh, this agreement is vague. At the time we did this, this is going back four or five months ago when we first started, when I first started conversations with the school board. It, we didn't have a site plane for the schools. We didn't have any, we didn't have a consultant on board to look at any of this stuff, so it was my best guess as to what, and there is a map, should be a map included in your packet, my best guess as to what we should be doing. One of the things folks need to keep in mind is that we reconstructed Kattowski from the South City Limits all the way up to Huntington several years ago. The intent, until I found out a couple of years ago, they were gonna relocate the school over there, was to reconstruct Kattowski and take it from four lanes to two lanes, because there is no need for four lanes out there of traffic. There, there just isn't. The traffic doesn't support it. So, working with the schools, working with our consultant FOTH, and looking at all of this, being able to put these roundabouts in there is going to, one, eliminate, it helps us eliminate the need for having four lanes, so there's this cost savings to the city from going from four lanes to two lanes. The other thing is, the school will be required to do everything on Huntington because that's, was identified in their traffic study. That has to be done. Everything then from, from Huntington all the way up to Downing is going to be the schools, again, because that was part of what was identified in their study. From Downing up to Green Hill, there was no improvements that needed, that the school needed to make in there, so that's on the city, in my opinion. And that's the way I had sold it to the schools. The Green Hill intersection could be, they need to make some improvements there, but there are some things that they could do that are relatively minor that would make it work. There is, again, a cost savings to the city for helping or helping them put a roundabout there to go from four lanes on Kattowski down to two lanes. Again, we don't need it for the traffic. If I have to have double lefts on Green Hill to turn south onto Kattowski, and council heard this at the work session the other day, I have to have four lanes all the way down to Downing. So again, there's an increased cost to the city for that. Then you get into looking at, especially at Green Hill, the complaints I've received over the years for speeding, red light running, accidents, things like that. I did look today. There were, in the last ten years, eight, eight serious accidents and three very serious accidents there. Um, no fatalities, thankfully, but now imagine putting forty-five miles an hour with all of these kids, inexperienced drivers coming through that intersection. I live by West High. I see how fast they go down Easton Avenue during the day. So again, this is a partnership with the schools. The schools has given us, us being the city, a number of old school sites. Edison is one of those. We've got, what, fifteen, twenty new houses, maybe more than that? But a number of these places, we are able to redevelop and get new housing because the schools are giving us for a dollar, these old school sites. Again, the actual percentages are not included in here because I did not have that at the time. I still don't. It's, hopefully on July twenty-first, I will be coming to council for an agreement with FOTH, our consultant that's done, that did the council presentation, for a final design contract. I will have a better idea after that. Once we get into final design, how much each entity is going to be paying. Maybe, is that enough? Not enough? I'm not, I'm not sure if that helps, or...
No, it's fine. And then, uh, so, number five is doing what again? The joint agreement?
So basically, all it is is saying that the school and the city are going to partner together to cover the co, pay for, to split the costs of the design and the construction of all the improvements on Kattowski and Huntington. And again, there is a very specific portion that the schools are gonna be one-hundred percent responsible for. There's gonna be a portion that the city is a hundred percent responsible for, and then there's gonna be a portion where both of us will be responsible for.
And this helps us to figure that out?
And this will help us figure this out.
And that's what we're hoping to see on the twenty-first?
Will be the agreement with FOTH to move us into final design. Again, we have the council work session. Council gave me the go-ahead to move ahead with the, with the four roundabouts. This is now, I am able to bring this to council to get this in place, and then, because we've been paying, currently, we've been paying bills to FOTH, and I haven't been able to re, get reimbursed from the schools yet.
And this also helps with that?
And that helps with this as well, so. But this is...
Voting no?
Voting no. The, probably is all going to be on the city then, or all on the school. Somebody else is going to have to make that decision at some point, so.
As far as being reimbursed?
But as far as reimbursed, we aren't gonna get reimbursed because they, legally, they don't have to do, reimburse us for anything.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Personally, I would like to see...
Personally, I would like to see this postponed until we have that information coming back on the 21st. Because then we'd have a better idea on how deep we're gonna be into this, based on the design. I, I, I'm a no vote today because this is so vague. I don't have any idea what this is gonna cost us, what our involvement on Green Hill. It doesn't say, a percentage-wise, on Green Hill, how much the city's gonna be responsible, how much they're gonna be responsible for. I'm, I'm, I'm 100% behind the Huntington extension. I, I just think that this is a cart before the horse, agreeing to what we're gonna do, what portions we're gonna be responsible for, not knowing how much that's gonna cost and what the design's gonna be.
So again, on the 21st, what it is, is a design agreement with FOTH to go ahead and start final design. It's still going to be, we aren't looking to go to, to bid until probably January. So it's not, this won't be back on the 21st. This is going to be months down the road, if that's what council wants to wait for. But again, then the city's holding, holding that amount, sitting there, not being reimbursed back by the schools.
But how, how, we're not getting reimbursed at all for the schools because the agreement says we're paying for everything upfront, and then the schools reimburse us after the fact.
As long as they sign, as long as we sign the agreement. The schools have signed it, their councils approved it, or their boards approved it, their, their legal folks have approved it. That's why it's coming to you tonight to be able to approve it, hopefully. And we can start getting some reimbursements from the schools. But until this is in place, there's nothing for us to, to do. We're just carrying that, that dollar amount.
And then, to reiterate, on the 21st is what?
Is just an agreement with FOTH to start final design of Huntington and Kattowski and get us to the point where we can go out to bid.
And if they don't agree on the 21st?
At, at some point, if council doesn't approve the agreements, we just, we just stop. And they're, and it, again, as I mentioned at the council work session, this is one of those things, the school wants to be open August of '28. If we delay this, as long, you know, at some point, I'm not gonna be able to get the construction done because I've got two construction seasons to get this done before the school opens. I don't think any of us wanna be out there while they're doing, they have school going while we're doing the work. So.
Yes, sir.
So I'm trying to get this straight here. So, how did we get to this point where we have all these plans for the school, but no idea on who's being reimbursed for what? And we've got deadlines being pushed on us. We've got the, on the 21st, that's coming up. So, why wasn't this all discussed and planned when the, the site was picked by the school, or whoever picked this site? I mean, did we not know? I mean, I, I mean, as soon as I seen it, we knew we were gonna have problems because we're right in a smack dab of town.
I, the, the schools did not discuss any of this with me, as far as the selection. That was on the schools.
But we're.
I did not see the site plan until probably, was this July? Probably February. Well after they had already decided where they were gonna build the school. And then they submit a site plan and said, hey, our city, here's what we're going to do. Please review and comment and go from there. That's when I took, went ahead and moved and started talking with the schools about the improvements that were gonna need to be made.
But, but it's also not the responsibility of the city of Waterloo to tell a school where they wanna build. They have a elected body that's also responsible for. What we have right now is we have residents and we have an area that needs to have a better gauge on the traffic in that area. And so, we have been talking, we have been, they have been meeting, trying to come up with some sustainable plans to be able to help the ease of flow of traffic. Whether it's people speeding through that area, whether it is the long-range plans that we have for Green Hill and Kattowski. We just built the University Avenue that goes in and around, that flows over it. So, there's portions of this project that we are going to be responsible for. And there's portions, two-thirds of it, I would assume, is what the school is going to have to do for this project. And so.
And it's roughly, and I had given the schools an estimate on what, roughly what it was going to be. And it's about 60-40, schools to city.
So.
So there, there is, but again, this was given to them four months ago before I had our consultant on board to look at costs, and before I had even seen a site plan. So I was shooting from the hip based on my best estimates on what I thought we were going to see. So again, they're, they're aware of what costs they're going to incur on this, or at least generally speaking. But until we get FOTH, FOTH agreement on the 21st and get the final design, and then we get everything designed, because that includes storm sewer, that includes trails, that includes a bunch of other things that have to go along with this, that at some point, we will tell them, and we will come back to, to council and tell them, here's how much the school's paying, here's how much the city's going to pay.
How do we, is there a negotiation going on here? I mean, in my opinion, the school should be paying 100% of this because they're the ones that are smacking it right in the middle and making, putting pressure on the city.
And they are paying for 100% of a portion, of portions of this.
And I'm saying all of it. What, was that ever up for negotiation, or?
I would argue that there are portions of it that they're, the school is not responsible for. From Downing up to Green Hill.
Not responsible because they picked the site. So they are 100% responsible.
But there is nothing that, from the road network that's out there now, there is nothing, no improvements that need to be made from Downing up to Green Hill that is on the schools, that there aren't any improvements.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so it, it sounds like, what I'm hearing from everything is that the school is going to be responsible for the portion, Mr. Knudsen, I might need to help. The school's gonna be responsible for the portion that contributes to that project. And we're gonna be responsible for portions that improve the well-being and the ease of, of flow of traffic and safety for not just those going to the school, but for the, the neighbors in that area, as well as the rest of us that travel that area. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Jamie, you want to, on record, state yes or no?
Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer, yes. That's, they are, they are responsible for a large portion of this.
Okay, okay.
And again, it was, and I apologize, we did not have, and maybe it was in color on, in the attachment for the map that was included in the council packet. I did have on there showing roughly what was, or should've been highlighted, what was, what was the schools, what was the cities, and what was going to be both of ours.
It's there.
Mr.?
One, one last question, unless you got something. How are we paying for our 40%?
It'll come out of local option. Typical street repairs. I was going to recon, as I said earlier, I was intending to reconstruct
Huntington.
All of this, Huntington and Kattowski, as, they were already, had been scheduled. But when I found out that the schools were looking at this site, I stopped. I did not move forward with it because I wasn't sure what was going to be required. The last thing I wanted to do was to bring, go to, go and reconstruct those roads, and then have them decide, oh, we need to make these, these changes. I didn't wanna be paying for things twice. So that's why I stopped where I did. But again, it's coming out of local option, which we would normally use regardless.
So, on, on, I'm sorry. On, on the Green Hill intersection, that, I got that clarified from Mr. Anderson. That is in the University Avenue TIF.
Yes.
Will that be local option sales tax, or will that be University Avenue TIF funding?
Probably some of both for that portion of it, yes.
And Mr. Mayor, I just, my name. One last thing. Totally in favor of the school, just for the record. I'm totally in favor of the safety of the traffic going through there. None of those things, I might, I'm not against any of those. I'm all in favor of doing the study to find everything that we need to do and go forward. That's not my issue at all. My issue, obviously, was the burden that's being placed on the city of Waterloo by the school system picking that location. Other than that, I don't wanna, you know, I'm just, I just wanted to make that clear. That I'm all in favor of the school combination. I'm all in favor of that. Just not a big fan of the location, and what it's putting us on.
And I, and I understand that, Mr. Simon, and I guess, I, my point would be, had the schools not chosen that location, the city would be on the hook for 100% of all of the repair or all the reconstruction of Huntington and Kattowski. Now, it's a shared cost between us and the schools. So we're both saving some money in the end. Again, it's all taxpayer dollars regardless of where it's coming from. But again, there is some savings for both entities.
I think, I think there's two things. One is understanding, cause council sentiments are perfect and on point, everybody's in this discussion. And so I didn't hear anybody not being in favor of the school. So, Mr. Simon, I, I didn't get that from your comments.
I just wanted to be sure.
I think, I think one, one challenge that we did have is remember that this, the actual approval of the school was delayed by how many months as it went to a, a public vote, which really squeezed the time down from the, I think, the 28th, when this is going to open. So that three months, or I can't remember the timeframe, when they had to go to a public vote for this, kinda shortened down everything by about three months or so. And so, yeah, but sentiments, everybody's, everybody's spot on. But we definitely need to make sure that we are not over-expending what we don't need to. And hopefully, the study will be able to show this as well. So. Madam Clerk, four, five, and six?
On number four, if I heard Jamie correctly, fourth is not supposed to be included?
Fourth is not on there.
Okay. Can we get a quick motion to strike that, so that the resolution is corrected?
Mr. Mayor?
I'll go ahead.
Somebody.
I'd like to make a motion just as an amendment to strike.
Friendly amendment.
Make a motion amendment to remove Fourth, Fourth Street from the conversion.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second, so to removal of Fourth from number four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And so, items four, five, and six minus Fourth Street. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Yep, and just Jamie, just, as you see, kinda council sentiments are that we don't wanna be overburdened with things that we shouldn't be in this project. Could someone take seven, eight, nine, please? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving a development agreement with 3350, University Avenue LLC for tax exemptions for the rehab of an existing building into 58 multiple family units with a $5,000 infill incentive for each unit totaling $290,000 with a minimum assessed value of $2.5 million located at 3350 University Avenue, which is within the consolidated urban revitalization area, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Next is a resolution approved, to approve a request by BJ Engineering on behalf of Three Stooges LLC for the preliminary plat, of Martin Road subdivision, a three-lot sub, industrial subdivision in the M-2-P planned industrial district located at 3330 through 30, uh, 13, sorry, 1330 through 1350 Martin Road. And number nine, a resolution approving a development agreement with Iowa Capital Partners LLC for tax exemptions for the construction of a 110-unit assisted senior living center with a minimum assessed value of $14 million located at 707 Tower Park Drive, which is within the city limits urban revitalization area, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there any, are any questions about seven, eight, and nine? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My question's on number seven. I, I had discussions with Mr. Anderson months ago when this, when he first brought this idea up to me. It's remodel. I don't call it infill development. It's, it's basically, in my opinion, taking hotel rooms and turning them into extended stay hotel rooms. Two units into one. And I, and I relate it to bridges. When, when, when they, when they remodeled bridges and made, took two hotel rooms and put them into one, they created 118 rent, basically rental units in, in that facility. We didn't give them $580,000, $590,000 for, or $5,000 for infill development. I'm 100% behind the tax abatements. I, I'm not supportive of the $5,000 per unit. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. As a part of the recent Elevate Housing new policy initiatives, this is a under number four B rehabilitation on eligible infill sites. It is an eligible infill site. The council can approve these on a case-by-case basis if it meets the qualifications for rehabilitation. The, the, the notes in the policy was, is the site worthy of a 657A? We did close the site down in 2022 for failing to meet rental registration program. Has it been abandoned? At this point, it has been closed since that time. Has it been vacant for an extended period of times? So it's been vacant for three years. Is it in a deteriorating condition? Again, that is why we closed it down. So it does meet the criteria for the council if they would want to approve the development agreement. We did draft the development agreement based on the new Elevate Housing policies.
And I remember the, one of the former chiefs and I had made a, I don't even know what to call it. We walked through there and it was, it was in deplorable, deplorable condition. And so, yeah, you know, what's, what's the vision, what's going to be the vision for these, from where it was at to what it's going to be? Can you talk about that?
Yeah, I believe it was very close to what Councilman Bozen said. They're, they're basically taking two hotel rooms and making them into one market-rate apartment. They do have Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credits, so they're trying to utilize some state assistance to get the project done. It would raise the assessed value of the project up to, up to $2 million. I mean, the current value is at $730,000.
And is this going to, is it hotel, or is it apartments? What's the, what's the?
They will be apartment units. And at 58 units, it's a 2.2-acre site, so that is 25.43 units per acre. It's a pretty good dense development along the university.
And cosmetically, on the outside, any changes as well?
They'll be doing some improvements to, to basically, you know, fix repairs and all that, and, and brighten it up a little bit.
Mr. Simon?
So, looking at the, the architect's pictures of these, these are really small groups. I, I mean, I don't, I don't see a family going in here with multiple kids or anything like that. This is gonna have to be almost like single individuals living in these. I don't know if there's a call for that in the city of Waterloo for a whole bunch of, I mean, there's not even bedrooms designed in these. They're just open lo, open rooms. Well, am I missing something there, or is this, is this what, is this what we're looking for as far as infill development?
It's a newer design that a lot of cities are seeing. We see them downtown Waterloo. The Grand Crossing site, as an example, has a lot of one-bedroom or no-bedroom type units, as well as two-bedroom and three-bedroom. So, it's a pretty common design in a lot of larger multifamily.
Mr. Nichols, did you have a question?
I just remember walking through this place, and it was, yeah, absolutely deplorable. I was just curious if we would see a design at any point of what, what this may look like inside.
We can definitely request more design information on, on exactly what they're gonna do there and share that with council.
I would just hate for them to try to, you know, do the same thing, make it look essentially, end up looking the same way it had in the past.
Right.
So, so Noel, I'm sorry, I'll come to you, Dr. Creighton, in a second. But, so, before the 5,000 is actually awarded, what type of walkthrough do we do? I know, are you able to walk through it, but how, how, how can folks be sure that these are?
It has to go through, obviously, it's a, it's a full renovation of a building, so it has to meet all building code requirements. And then it'll also have to meet all rental registration requirements. Should be very similar. But there's a couple of minor different things in there, so both, both staff would walk through them.
Mrs. Creighton Smith?
Yeah, yes. My, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern is the same that's echoed by my, my, my colleagues, is that these units aren't really going to be able to house families without the families destroying the property because it's too small for them. So we're gonna end up back in the same situation. So if he were to do, if they were to do something different, maybe half of the structures, half of, maybe 26 or 28, but to say you're gonna have that many units in that space? have that many units in that space, um, it's, yeah, I, I'm not convinced that it's gonna be much different than, um, how, different than where we, we ended up now. I mean, I think it's gonna result in the same kind of problems and the same kind of deterioration of the property. Um, and, and just spacing it up on the outside is not enough for me. Um, so, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, well, we know, we know the, the, the majority of what is there are the, the plans for what's going to happen on the inside. So I was just saying it'd be nice to, uh, make sure in and around on the outside, uh, that there at least is some beautification efforts. And then number two, I guess the thing we have is, um, we have to have a variety, uh, within this community. Not every, not everyone, uh, has children, uh, so we need to make sure that there's a variety of offerings to people, uh, throughout this community. Mr. Nichols?
Um, yes, thanks, Mayor. Uh, have you worked with this developer before?
Yeah, the, the main developer for this site is, uh, Brent Dahlstrom.
Okay.
Counsel?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could, could, can you give us, um, connect us with that particular developer? What has he done that we know about? Um, off, because I, his name doesn't help.
His Grand Crossing, um-
Okay.
-which we know has won a national award for, um, partnering with community development, having a market rate plus affordable housing. Uh, we know, um, the, what's the one over there? The, um, where the art block, the, um, youth art team is at?
The art block.
The, the art block where the sixteen nineteen project and the art block is, uh, right there has, well, that, done that one along the river, but what's the one over here? Around the corner where the youth art team is at? The sixteen nineteen project, that's called?
Masonic Temple.
The Masonic Temple?
Masonic Temple.
And I'm just telling you, it's only gonna get worse with me.
Yes, he, he did the renovation of the Masonic Temple into twenty-six units as well.
So he's done it, he's done it, but this place was, uh, I, honestly, I was really disappointed at the condition of this place, um, when I did a, a walkthrough. So we know it's going to take some money, uh, and some support to be able to take that and turn it into something. So ultimately, it's, it's council's, uh, consideration, uh, but yeah, we know it takes dollars to reinvest in here, to take it from nothing to, uh, getting it back. And we do need a variety, uh, around town for people to have different options. So council, if nothing else, um, call for the vote.
Mr. Bosin?
No on seven, yes, eight, and nine.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No on seven, yes on eight and nine.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Is that because we're missing two?
Right. So we got two absent, so council wants to bring it back when we got a full council, that's fine. All right, um, number, so do we have to do, uh, thirteen or just make notation?
Um, yeah, we need to make a motion to move that to July first, twenty-first, excuse me.
So let's, let's do, um, let's do, uh, ten and eleven, and then we'll do twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, because thirteen has a amendment. So ten and eleven?
Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution to support an application by Martin Flats LLC for the Iowa Historic Tax Credit Program for Iowa Economic Development Authority to construct two market rate upper story apartments located at three nineteen East Fourth Street, including an economic development grant of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars and property tax rebates of fifteen years at seventy percent, as approved by the City Council Resolution number tw- twenty-two-three dash seven four four on November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And number eleven is adopting a resolution granting the United States Department of Commerce, DOC, Economic Development Administration, EDA, certain financial assurances in conjunction with the disaster recovery grant application.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. I think we may have a question on this?
Forest Dilavu seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. On number ten, it's, it says they're going to give a grant of two hundred thousand dollars for two apartments on Fourth Street. Where does this two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars come from? It's taxpayer money, I know, but which one of the accounts does that come out of?
All right, thank you, Mr. Dilavu. Noel, you want to talk about this particular course and then whether or not it was approved already?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Uh, the hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars was paid out of the downtown TIF for the rehabilitation of the entire building, um, to help them acquire it, and then they are under, um, a full rehabilitation of the project. They're, they're particularly asking for support for their reapplication for the Iowa Historic Tax Credit, so they did apply for them last time and did not get them. Um, they do get additional points, uh, going through it again, so they're reapplying for those. So all these incentives are already in place. Um, this is just a resolution stating those incentives again for the state and allowing them to apply for the historic tax credits.
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. What is considered a market rate, uh, for an apartment based on the, uh, what, earnability of someone in Waterloo, Iowa?
Mr. Anderson, would you expound on that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So the industry standard of market rate would mean that there are no tax credits or no other incentives specifically, uh, limiting it to low to moderate income housing, which is generally set at, uh, eighty percent average median income or lower.
That didn't mean, that didn't answer, I guess, my question of dollars and cents, because the, the average person in this city earns X amount of money. Is that ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent of their income or?
There, there's obviously banking standards for how much you should pay for housing. I think it's thirty percent of your general disposable income, shouldn't go to more than that to housing. It's hard to give a number to it, because obviously, uh, you know, you could build an apartment building that, that rents for twelve hundred a month. I could build apartment building that rents for nine hundred a month, and, and people are gonna see which apartment building they, they like better and which one they want to live in. So it's, there's not an exact number out there.
Okay. Even nine hundred a month sounds expensive for some of the people that, their income in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
Mayor?
Sir?
On, on number ten, correct me if I'm wrong, Noel, we discussed this at the last council meeting, she hasn't, you gave her a six month extension, she has until December to have this finished. Is that upstairs and downstairs, or is that just the apartments?
No. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, that is correct. Uh, our development agreement is for the entire project, so obviously, if, if, uh, if she has to stop construction while she's reapplying for the credits, I don't know if she does, um, since she's applied for them before, um, we may have to look at an extension based on what eligibility she might have for the state, if she's awarded the credits and what timeline she needs to do that, or if she can still stay within the timeline, we'll find out.
Number eleven, that, that, this is an application, or do, or have we been approved for this money?
We are applying to the Economic Development Association for some funding to help us with the Waterloo Air and Rail Park. Um, primarily, Jamie can go into more detail, but primarily stormwater improvements to serve the entire park area.
And that's, that was my question, because we're applying, it's for three million three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, uh, seventy-four thousand nine dollars, of which they're gonna, they're going to pay if we get this grant at two million twenty-four thousand four hundred and four dollars, and we're on the hook for one million three hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and five dollars. If we don't get this grant, are we on the hook for the three million? It has to be done, right? Stormwater detention, are we on the hook for the?
We, we will.
Three point three million?
We will still have to do improvements out there. We could look at, uh, doing less and doing it in phases or something like that if we, if we needed to. Um, but we went with the eligibility of what we were eligible for through the EDA grant to, to get it done.
Yeah, I just don't have confidence in our federal government granting anything right now. That's why I'm worried about this, but that, that's just my opinion, but I, I was more worried that we're gonna be taking another three point three million out of the TIF. That, I don't remember that being discussed when, when it was first, we talked about the, up to like seventeen million out of that TIF for that project. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On number ten, Noel, um, I see there's tax rebates of fifteen years at seventy percent for that property on, um, East Fourth Street. At, at one point earlier, you discussed that there's parameters that buildings have to meet in order to get certain rebates. Does this apply to that, or is that a moving scale?
This is a pretty standard process. We, we have differing rebate amounts based on the increase in taxable value. Um, I don't have it right in front of me since we, we had it previously approved, that I, I believe the taxable value of the building's going up by six or seven hundred thousand, if I remember right.
Okay, but we had some buildings downtown that it had to reach a certain amount, you, you told us one time in a meeting.
Correct, correct. Same, same.
I don't, I don't remember.
They're all in the same scale.
So it's not dollar amount, it's percentage of increase on the property back?
We look at the increase in property taxes, uh, paid, so that we can see how fast we're paid back for any kind of funding that we give or through the rebates.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, everybody's been knocking down the doors for seventy percent for fifteen years.
It depends if the values equate to that, though. So, uh, this one, if you, if you, uh, go by the site, it's actively, uh, being worked on right now as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, uh, sirs. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Um, for number ten, I am full, I'm in full support of what they are doing there. However, I do have to abstain my vote on that one. Um, but I do, I do hope that council is also in full support of what Sierra and Landon are doing there, especially with the businesses that they, that they are bringing downtown. As we know, our mall-
If you have to abstain, if you have to abstain from your vote, uh, we'll, we will stop those comments right there. So.
Oh, 'cause I don't want to persuade you to do anything, right?
Right, right. Uh, and I think folks know, I think downstairs, there's two businesses potentially, and then upstairs, uh, there'll be two, two apartments as well. So, uh, is there anything else for the cause?
I'm just the same, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to add that it is a, it's a historic building, and we're trying to maintain the historical integrity of downtown Waterloo and that. Uh, what she's doing is doing that, as well as, um, also sharing some of our city's history that is vibrant history that our city needs to, uh, embrace, uh, and be made aware of. So, um, the, the walkway even between the, um, two buildings, all of that, um, has a, uh, the sentiment of some of the cities that I've, I've had an opportunity to walk through their city coves and alcoves. So, yeah, most definitely.
All right, thank you, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Uh, yes, on all of the extension, abstention on ten.
All right, thank you. Uh, twelve, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, if someone could, uh, notate on, uh, thirteen, uh, that, that's moving to the twenty-first. Is that how it should be done, ma'am?
Need to make a motion to postpone it to the twenty-first.
So how do we do that? Do we take that, or do we just do twelve?
We could just do that one separately, and then maybe do twelve, fourteen, and fifteen?
So we're gonna take them out of order to someone, or do we just take?
Or we could just do twelve?
Let's do twelve.
Okay.
Mr. Nichols?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution approving, uh, an amendment to the development agreement, minimum assessment agreement with FDP OC LLC, originally approved on October first, twenty twenty-four, for the city to acquire a portion of the property located at five oh three Commercial Street for future downtown development, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. I think we have a question on this item.
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I don't wrap my head around great, uh, buying a portion or getting a portion of a building. Um, if we can't have it all, or we can't find a developer to develop the whole building, why are we only taking a portion of a building?
All right, thank you, Mr. Drier. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. You may recall, um, at one point, the Courier did a metal building expansion on the northerly, uh, northeasterly face of the building. As a part of this overall development agreement, um, they would be removing that metal warehousing portion. Um, it's, it's a metal warehouse in downtown, not really the, the historic look that we're looking for. So there is some incentives in there for them to take that building down and build a brand new eight thousand square foot building in the, uh, one of our industrial parks. Um, as a result of that, there will be some vacant land to the northeast of the main building that they'll be rehabbing for the seventy units. So we'll be acquiring that land. It's basically a hundred and twenty-six feet, um, off of, uh, Cedar Street there. Um, so we'd have some more land, um, next to our city parking lot, um, to either have, expand temporary parking, um, for use by patrons of the building and other events, or, um, we would have it as a development site as well.
So we have somebody interested in the old Courier building, I hope?
Yeah. Um, I think they are going to transform that into, um, seventy, seventy units as well. Is there gonna be commercial or just all apartments?
There'll be some commercial space along Commercial Street.
Yeah, so we've been kind of working on that for a little while, but thank you, sir. Uh, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I have a question. Uh, you know, it says originally approved on October first, twenty twenty-four. The original development agreement, uh, was filed, it was recorded on the twenty-fourth, we signed it and, and dated August fifth. So is it August, is it, is it when it's recorded, or is it when we as a council approve it? Because we approved it on August fifth.
We can, we can definitely, uh-
Of twenty twenty-four?
Yep.
Because my question is, is they got twelve months to start construction from the time we approved this development agreement. I, I, and, and we've given enough, quite a few incentives. We, we gave twenty-eight thousand dollars towards the fifty-six thousand dollars to take off the aluminum on the outside. We're, we're going to give them two hundred thousand dollars to relocate their, their, their pole building. We're gonna give them an acre, minimum acre lot, either at the airport or the northeast industrial, correct?
Correct.
And, and whether, if we own it, otherwise, like, I mean, we pay three hundred thousand dollars an acre to Mr. Youngblood, uh, out in his area. Uh, I don't, I'm not in favor of, of paying them five hundred thousand dollars for, you said a hundred and twenty-six feet, that the, the agreement we have calls for a hundred and thirty-two feet, so there's a discrepancy there. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, they, that they could market the land and, and sell, sell, I mean, I, I have a problem paying a half a million dollars for land that we'll, we could potentially give away for a dollar again. So that's just my opinion, but there's, there's just so many discrepancies in what we have here and what we have in the development agreement, and you say a hundred and twenty-six feet, everything in here says a hundred and thirty-two feet.
I probably just wrote it down wrong. It'd be whatever's in there, so.
It's one thirty-two. Okay, all right.
Write it down right.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm good now, thank you. But I, like, I, I voiced my opinion, that's, okay. Appreciate it.
Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
No.
Uh-huh.
Twelve, it's the only one we're doing right now.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, so that one fails.
Yep.
Uh, could someone take thirteen, uh, postpone that to the twenty-first?
I thought we did that.
Nope.
Nope, we did not do that.
Apologize. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to, on number 13, adopting a resolution of development agreement with RAP LLC for construction of a 4200 square foot commercial building with minimum assessed value of $273,000, located south of 3135 Marni Avenue and authorize mayor to execute said document. I'd like to postpone this until the July 21st, 2025.
Correct.
Do we, do we need to vote on the postponement?
Yes.
All right, for the postponement of number 13 to the 21st, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number 14, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution to approve a request for a minor site plan amendment by Prairie Rapids Square, number two LLC, to change previously approved site plan to now remove four detached garages, each having six separate spaces, having a total of 24 separate garages, and now pave that area for 29 outdoor parking spaces located east of 3121 Kimball Avenue, right auto zone.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Aesthetically, it's going to look totally different than all of his other units there. And we, if you build a house, you got to put a garage. I understand these are apartments, but, and it's probably a financial thing, plain and simple. But I, I would really like to see them keep the garages since all the other units have garages too.
All right, I had this similar questions. Mr. Anderson, you want to talk about this in relation to others? Mr. Nichols, did you have a question or?
Nope.
Can it wait? Okay.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I'm not sure if someone's online for the developer. They had noted that.
Yep.
There is someone?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, hey, James Kincaid with Axon Consultant, the civil engineer on behalf of the developer this evening. Counsel is correct. It's, it's been conveyed to me as a financial revision to the site. I think the removal of the covered parking stalls reduced the cost of each individual unit by reducing the development costs. By way of removing those parking lots or those covered parking stalls, we were able to reduce the overall impervious development impacts. And by way of removing a significant amount of pavement. So there, there's greener space, especially on the south side of this project. And all that contributed to reducing the development cost. And the developer also stated that these covered garages aren't as desirable for the potential tenants of these units as they initially understood them to be. So it was kind of a, if it's not helping the desirability and increasing the development cost, they wanted to remove them.
Okay. Yes, sir. I have a question for this gentleman, if I may. So it sounds like you have an idea of what the tenants are going to be. Is this, is this affordable housing? Is it, what's the square foot of these things? I mean, but where did you come up with the idea that the tenants would not want garages?
I, I, you know, as the engineer representing the developer, I can't, I don't want to give you an answer that misrepresents their, their intent. Certainly, I can reach out to them and we can, we can, we can answer those questions. Yep.
And then the last thing, right down the street from this location, I, I work on that, down that street, there's boats parked out in open spaces behind apartment complex, right over there by Arby's and stuff like that. I don't, I don't know if I'm in favor of the open space for, for multiple reasons, but just to, to point out that that's what we look at every day is parked cars and boats and other stuff that have been sitting out there for who knows how long. So I'm in favor of the garages, not, I, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping the original agreement that we agreed upon. That's just what I'm saying. Thank you.
How detrimental is that to the project?
As far as keeping the garages?
Right, right.
I, I think the, the, my timeline is a little vague on it, but the original approval of this was maybe a year ago or something like that. And the, there had been just financial, I don't want to say struggles, but less incentivized to kick off the project. And this was sort of the retake at it. I imagine them wanting this change was sort of their, their, hey, we're ready to do this, but we really need to make the numbers work. This is what we'd like to do. And we were able to remove, like I mentioned, we were able to remove more development costs by way of paving and things like that. So I, I think it was more incentivizing to them to, to pull the trigger on the project for this revision.
All right, Mr. Bozen?
And, and for, just to play on what Mr. Simon said and, and what you said, sir, is when, when these came before us originally, these are one bedroom apartments. And, and maybe their, their analogy of that, that it doesn't, the garage doesn't really is, is appealing to these people because they're trying to keep the, the price of these apartments down. Some of the other apartments in that units or in that complex are two bedroom apartments, some are three bedroom apartments. This whole complex is one bedroom apartment. So they're trying to, to recruit younger people that don't have kids that just, are just looking for a small, affordable apartment.
Counsel, anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you, counsel, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session on the purchase of real estate pursuant with Iowa Code Section 21.51J.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. See on here, the reasons why we're adjourning, sir, and that's in order, correct? All right, according to our city attorney, Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Thank you.